But how do I shut off the recording?
Wow. So does anyone, would anyone like to make a motion to accept our policy notes from? February sixteen?
So moved.
Second. Since there's only two of us, it seems silly to say it, but. Okay, any edits, comments? Amendments?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Marta.
We're so in sync, we say everything at the same time. We have three policies tonight because the MASC sent out a newsletter that has like ten pages, of course, with policies to review. Yeah, so I'm gonna think before retirement, I'm not getting through all those, but we're gonna make our attempts to get through. The first one is school councils and I have the MASC version and the current Chutesbury one, which is from seventeen, so it's been a while since we looked at the policy. So the, the only difference that I see overall, even though there's lots of paragraphs, is it really spells out the roles and responsibilities of the school council. That the principal is the co-chair, it's part of the Ed Reform Act, the principal is responsible, has the responsibility of managing the school, which means part of the school, the school improvement plan. It clearly states that school council conforms to open meeting law. And then it does reiterate those four points from our earlier policy, which adoption of educational goals, identification of needs, reviewing the school budget and formulation of a school improvement plan.
I think anything that adds clarity, I'm perfectly fine with. So I would say the updated from MASC makes sense here.
Bethany? Okay. Great. The next policy is school improvement plan, that's BDFAE. And it looks like we didn't have a policy included. And so we have the MASC version of that. And it really is sort of a partner to the school council policy. Are we okay with?
Yeah, I was gonna.
MASC version, okay. And the last one is Policy CHACH, which is development and dissemination of procedures. So that really speaks to when we as a, you as a school committee craft and approve policies, some of those policies will have to have procedures. And then that would be basically the administration. And then any feedback from staff, students and community organizations. And it just talks about operating within the guidelines of the policies that you all approve.
I'm happy to adopt that as well.
Okay. Are you all okay if I just keep going through that newsletter? Or do you want to look through it between now and the next meeting to see if anything jumps out at you?
No, I'm fine if you just want to keep it on rundown list.
Okay, and some of them, I'm gonna say it's like super easy. They've made like language changes or grammar changes. We'll just have to, we can keep our current policy and just say review. So I may overload the next agenda because some of them are really minor changes. Yeah. All right, so I, I will bring forth probably five, five more policies because we are super efficient and crank through. And in the meantime, if something really jumps out at you because you know, your nighttime reading is the MASC newsletter, I'm all in with, I'm all in with accepting whatever you say. And that's all I have tonight.
That sounds good.
All right, so do I have a motion to adjourn and give us twenty minutes before the next meeting?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Marta, I.
Rose, I.
To the most efficient policy committee in Union Twenty-Eight, I will see you in twenty minutes, meeting is adjourned.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, seven oh one, call order. Do we have any public hearings? Appears that we don't. Moving forward. There's a review of the agenda and calendar. I don't know of any significant changes, we'll just keep going through. Okay. Moving on, we.
Hey Julie, Julie, will you mute?
Oh, I'm so sorry, yes.
That's okay.
Okay, warrants, do we have any gifts? No, okay. Grants? No, okay. And the warrants, we need, we need to record those? The numbers and the minutes, does anybody? Just Trevor.
Earlier, but I can read them off if you'd like.
I sent them to Trevor also, and I have them too, so whatever works, if you want to do it Caitlin.
Sure, me just a minute to put up. Sorry, should have had this up earlier.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so there are quite a few because it dates back to the last school committee meeting on June fifteenth. So for during FY twenty-three, the previous year, we have three zero two seven on June thirtieth for thirty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars, twenty-five cents. Three zero two eight, also for June thirtieth of twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars. Moving into this year, three zero zero one from July first for eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-two cents. Three zero zero two from July twenty-fifth for three thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty-eight cents. Three zero zero three from August eighth for seventeen thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-two cents. Three zero zero four from August twenty-second for nine thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-nine cents. Three zero zero five from September fifth for six thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. Three zero zero six from September nineteenth for twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-one cents. And three zero zero seven, I usually don't go into future meetings, but I did list it to what I gave Trevor, but usually I stop of the day of the meeting, but that's for October third. Thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-two cents. Those are the accounts payable for payroll from FY twenty-three for warrant number three two six from June twenty-sixth for eighty-eight thousand, thirty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. Moving into this year, three oh one from July eleventh for seventy-eight thousand, eight dollars and thirty-two cents. Three zero two from July twenty-fifth, seventy-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifteen cents. Three zero three from August eighth for seventy-nine thousand, fourteen dollars and twenty-four cents. Three zero four from August twenty-second for seventy-two thousand, four hundred and three dollars and eighty-nine cents. Three zero five from September fifth for ninety thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars and forty-five cents. And finally, three zero six from September nineteenth for eighty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and eight cents. Those are all the warrants.
Thank you. Jen, go ahead.
Thanks, I have all of that plus one more voucher from June twenty-seventh, which was twenty twenty-seven. I don't know if that needs to be included, but it was one more that came out after the last meeting. That one was for twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seven cents.
What was the date of that one again?
That was June twenty-seventh.
And warrant number?
It was twenty twenty-seven.
I can look back through our system and I'll update Trevor.
Jen also sent me that information, so I can just add it in, that's fine.
Okay, great. Moving on to approval of minutes, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from June fifteenth?
So moved.
So moved.
You second?
Seconded.
And all in favor?
I think we have to do a roll call vote.
Right.
Yeah. Taylor, I.
Rose, I. Heard, I. Okay. Next on the agenda is any unfinished, unfinished business and updates with capital projects in the building process. So I guess updates on the roof, boilers, kitchen floor. I know we have good news on some of this.
Yeah, I can give it, who, who on the school committee is the capital planning rep? Jen, so I don't know if you want to talk about anything, Jen, but I will talk about what has happened. So over the summer was very hectic, we have a new roof, which is fantastic, it's lovely, we have some new gutters. We have beautiful new library flooring, you're all welcome to come in and see any of these. We had I don't know who in the town, probably Becky, wrote a grant and we had like a weatherization team come in and do like weatherization to the building to try to be more efficient. So that was helpful. And we had our cameras installed and those are up and running and you're welcome to come and see those too. We have a big TV in the office now that we we tell people we watch Netflix all day, but it is not for Netflix, it is it is for our cameras. So I wel, I welcome you all at any time to come in and see those upgrades, we're super grateful for all of them. And we were approved for the kitchen floor, but it was, we could not manage all of those projects within the timeframe of when our summer program ends, because we're not allowed to have random people about the building when there's children inside. So from the time our schools, our summer program ends to when school begins is not that much time and we certainly didn't have enough time for another project. So that money is saved and that will be done next summer. Because it's pretty extensive, because we have to get electricians involved, because we have big appliances in the kitchen. So it's not a simple redo kind of like normal floor, it's a little more involved. So those are the updates there. And again, I don't know all of the details, I've spoken with several people that are on like the buildings committees and the capital planning committees and all the committees. And I think the intent is for the springtime to fix the rot on the building from the rain, like there's rotting, I mean, you all have kids at the building, you know. There's like rotting along the top of the building from the water damage and then a lot on the sides, particularly in the back of the building and on the side where the sixth and fifth grade are, because it's much more shaded. And it's to fix the rot and then hopefully to get it painted. And those, and the next thing on my list of capital planning things, now that we've, now it took ten years and I know more before me to get the roof done, my next thing is gonna be the, the parking lot, because it's really bad.
It looks like we have a few questions, Anna's hand went up first.
Hi, can you just remind me, was the entire roof replaced and how many security cameras got installed? I had a question from the community and they wanted to know.
The entire roof did. The entire roof did get replaced, I don't know off the top of my head the amount of cameras, there's, they're only in the hallways. So I can count them right now, hold on a second, one, two, three, four, five, six inside in the hallways. And probably one, two, three, four, five or six around the outside perimeter of the school. But anyone is welcome, I mean, if the community member wants to see the cameras, they can come when school is over and there's no children inside, I'm happy to take them around.
Awesome.
Suzie, you had a question?
Yeah, the FinCom met, whatever night, I don't know what night it is tonight, Tuesday. And discussed the roof's completion and we would, we want to send out a town announce and we would like Jackie to put it in the newsletter, the Roadtown newsletter. Maybe you already have, but we wanted, because there are community people who were quite concerned about it and now it was completed in two steps and in fact, the town paid for almost all of it, we did use some money from the Joe Commerford got that was gonna be for the library, what we moved it into the roof, so. And that, that, that the fix on the rot is still planned. And we're still gonna meet that and the town has been working hard to meet those obligations. And we really hoped that the MSBA would help us and they did not. And now they've revised their plans and they're gonna be doing more repair funding, but we missed it and we took care of it ourselves.
I have to say, I know there's, there was another hand, I just have to say, the amount of community members involved in all of these committees that have taken time to come and see things and see it through and check on it and make sure things were being done appropriately, it was really awesome. It was really, really awesome. Yeah.
Great, it looks like the hand disappeared, so with the disappearance of the hand, I guess we can move forward.
It did, it disappeared.
Okay, just making sure. Okay, if we're ready, we'll move on to new business and it looks like the first thing we have on the list is making a, an adjustment to the academic calendar.
So yes, we were going to, but now we are not going to need to amend the calendar and what happened was we were going to have an early release for staff, union-wide professional development. And what happened is we ran into various scheduling and calendar issues and bussing availability with multiple schools and we planned it in August, which clearly wasn't enough time. So my apologies, we will not be having that extra professional development, so we do not need to amend the calendar.
Okay, well, that is easy enough.
Thank you.
Yeah. And did family handbook, I didn't know if.
We also, no, we won't be talking about that because Debbie and I are in the middle of, like, I feel like, well, first of all, we were working off a COVID handbook for so long, but secondly, with the handbook, the way the format was, I was talking about it with Debbie Lee this summer and it feels like totally like nineteen ninety, like seven in the format and I just felt like in twenty twenty-three, we should like, maybe like not just have it like that. So we've been working on a way to have it on our website that is similar to kind of how the policies are. If you've ever looked at it, where there's like a whole tab for the handbook and then there's links along the side that you click on for specific things and it's almost ready, but she's, she, Debbie's stuff is done, it's my stuff that's not done. And so so we're hoping to have that up by, by October and so it should be able to be approved then. And there are some differences from after COVID, so it is something that I'll want you to have like at least a week before to look at before we approve it.
Okay, perfect.
So we'll put that on next month's agenda then? Perfect.
Okay, that works. Next on the agenda is comfort dogs at the school and it looks like Jessica, you're gonna be presenting?
We have a guest of honor, we have a guest of honor. A guest of honor who's sound asleep right now. But I'll wake him up, don't worry. Yeah, I wanted to present this idea. The background, I guess, is that I also work at Leverett halftime. I think everyone here knows me, I don't.
As the, as the school counselor.
As the school counselor, not in the office. And, and I, there was a tragedy at Leverett and they had brought in a bunch of therapy dogs. And although I loved dogs before and thought they were a special way to connect with children, especially seeing the handlers come in with the dogs was really powerful. And it got me kind of thinking about how awesome it would be if there was a therapy dog available at our schools with a handler that the students knew, as opposed to strangers coming in or police officers coming in with a dog. So last summer, we accidentally kind of fell into a dog situation where there was a miniature golden doodle available through a friend and and we ended up adopting a four-month-old miniature golden doodle. And when we did that, I was like, wait, this is a great breed of dog to be a therapy dog. And now that I'm in a position at the schools where I do see kids and have relationships with the students, how great would it be if I could train Freddie, it's his name, to be able to come into schools? So we started training and did our, you have to go through advanced training before you can do therapy dog training. So we did our three rounds of their, of basic training last year. And then when he turned one in April, he was allowed to do the therapy dog training. And we did that through Bright Spots Therapy Dogs, which is a great organization. And now he is trained up and I'm hoping to be able to bring him into school. I'd love to start with him just like a half of a day a week, I'm only at Chutesbury two and a half days. And so I was thinking a half day might be good to start with to get him used to it, get him more trained and he will be exhausted because he's not used to doing this type of work for very long periods. So so that's my story. I have been bringing him into Leverett one morning a week and it's been really very sweet. He's so sweet with the kids. Oh, I forgot to mention, because he's a mini, he only weighs seventeen pounds and he might fill out a little bit, but he's very little. I'll wake him up in a second and show you, but um, he is very sweet with the kids and the kids just like really are so tender with him. It's a great way for me to connect with the kids and and I have never seen the sixth grade class in Leverett so quiet and still for twenty minutes. Like they sat so still because they didn't want to get Freddie worked up or make him nervous in their class because they want him to visit more. The teacher was like, thank you so much. Twenty minutes.
Can you talk a little bit about the insurance?
Oh yeah, so I figured there might be a list of questions or concerns about this. All of which I have answers to. So one of them is the liability and through Bright Spots, if you do Bright Spots events, they insure you, but if you do things outside of Bright Spots, like what I'm hoping to do, you can have your dog put under your homeowner's insurance. So we've already done that, so he's insured in case of any problems. Also, I know there's like a, a worry about dog allergies with students, but because he's a mini golden doodle, he's hypoallergenic. So great for allergies, not great for his grooming bill, because we have to get him, his hair cut every six weeks. But, but so that should be all set. At Leverett, there is a student who's afraid of dogs and I made sure to connect with the teachers beforehand and say, if you don't want me in your room or if you know of a fear, like, of course, I do not want to, you know, make that worse. So I've been staying away from that classroom.
Jessica, we also have one over at Swift River, so this would be the third school in Union Twenty-Eight that has a comfort dog, which is, you know, really exciting for our, our union.
Ollie is great and really mellow and older than Freddie. So I feel like by the time Freddie gets to that age, he might be.
We all mellow with age, I think.
And let's see, what else, what other concerns? Oh, and I figured too, like, some people have concerns about sanitation with dogs. And so I will not be bringing him near the kitchen. I will not be bringing him near where people prep food in the staff room. And with him only starting a half a day of a week, he will not be toileting on school. So I think we'll be good with that to start. And of course, I would always clean up after my dog on school grounds. Big pet peeve when I find messes on the track, so. And it's, it was really interesting because I looked into some of the studies about therapy dogs too, being in school environments and a lot of them were about student engagement, which is another thing that Freddie has been doing at Leverett when students are trying to take a break from the classroom or, you know, get away from something that is hard. Freddie is a great way to coax them back and to help calm them if, if they don't have strategies to use to calm themselves. Freddie has been great for just you know, decreasing that anxiety or in those, in those stressful moments, so. And he's very soft, so kids love to like get their fingers in him and, and.
He also gives hugs.
Oh, yes, he also hugged a student. So he, he will hug me and my family members if we pick him up, we say, give me a hug and he puts his head on our shoulder. But I held him up to a student and I said, can you say goodbye? Can you give a hug? And he put his head right on the student's chest. It was very adorable.
I want to see Freddie.
And he has a little, he has a little badge.
Come here Fred, they want to see how. He's like so groggy right now. Oh, he's giving a hug already because he's.
Oh my god.
This is Freddie. He's not always this mellow, but at this time of day, he usually is.
He needs a moose bandana, Jackie and Jess.
Oh, Annie Foley said she might be able to make a moose bandana out of one of the small T-shirts, so I think we're good. But yeah, he's a love. And like I said, he's a pup, well, he's just over, he's almost a year and a half. So he's still learning and I think as long as I think of him as a puppy or a dog first and a therapy dog second, I don't put too much stress on myself about it. But he's also so little that even when he gets excited, he's not very scary.
Well, and you would be the only one handling him because you are the trained handler, it wouldn't be like anybody can handle him.
Right, yeah, that's a thing with Bright Spots that you have to like sign a big thing about always having him leashed and always having him with you. So I know some dogs can roam around schools, but I would not be doing that. He'd be with me, yeah. And there he is in all his cuteness.
He's so cute.
I'll say, I think it's a great idea, we have one up at tech and the improvement especially, it's a special ed teacher that has the dog and the days that he's there, the kids are so much more engaged and so much more calm. And we've really seen a great, a great difference with the therapy dogs, especially once they're properly trained and everything's taken care of.
I agree, I think it's a great idea. Are there any other comments from the committee or questions?
Yeah, and if you guys have questions at any time, feel free to email me or message me, because I'm still in the process of figuring out how this will work and, and. how this will work and, and what Freddie will be able to do and um, all of that stuff. So we'll play it by ear together and yeah, just let me know.
Do we, so should I guess I'm gonna throw this out there. Should we take a, do we take a vote? Um, and that.
You don't have to, but I think we want this. Yeah.
I'm sorry, I cut you off.
I think it would be great if you want to vote because it would say that you support what Jess and Jackie are doing for the students.
Sure. Okay. Um, do we have a motion to um, include comfort dogs Freddie at the Chutesberry Elementary School?
So moved.
Seconded.
I mean, who is gonna vote back against Freddie?
I mean, we're open to that, though.
I, that is true, absolutely.
And Jackie did mention that at our next policy meeting, there is a MASC policy about service dogs and we could adopt that as follow-up to this.
Okay, uh, so all in favor? We just need the roll call.
Martell, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Bird, aye.
Maui, aye.
Rose, aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you guys.
Oh, thank you.
And the adults, I mean, we talked a lot about the students, but I just wanted to say that sometimes I have seen with my own eyes what they do for the, for adults too, really needing it. And so just the staff at the school too, I think really. I know for Ollie, like Kelly's Ollie, the, at Swift River, for me, that dog helps. So he helps me a lot. So I think that I'm just really excited about that.
Can Freddie get a school picture?
Oh, he's getting a school picture, yeah.
Okay, yes, that's a great idea.
I can't wait to come meet him.
Okay, um, so I guess we'll move into reports. First up is the superintendent's report. Um, we all read, heard the big news. Um, so very, very, very happy for your retirement, but incredibly sad to see you go.
So it is a very happy thing and an exciting thing, but it's also happy sad at the same time. Um, as I said in my letter, there's just so many people who have really taught me about being a district leader and who have shown me what professional progressive amazing education is and um, not just because I was superintendent here, but I think Union Twenty-Eight and the four schools do incredible things. Um, and I would put us, our schools up against any school in Massachusetts because I, I think we do amazing things. This year, um, we're going to continue our district professional development work around social justice and equity and the science of reading, which is really exciting to continue in year two. We had a leadership um, retreat. This year we had it at Swift River School. We did lots of planning around safety, curriculum, grant use, professional development, um, looking at social justice standards, which is really exciting and um, expanding our learning walks, not just in the area of literacy, but also around equity. So I'm really happy that we're going to be doing that. All of the leadership team or most of us were at the um, August sixteenth community coordinated family and community engagement um, press conference. It was our awesome Gilly Bedine, other CNC coordinators, the commissioner and associate commissioner of early education and care. Um, and it was nice to hear from uh, Union Twenty-Eight parents who shared their experiences with CNC. Um, and.
Who's Chutesberry parents, actually.
Who's Chutesberry parents. Chutesberry was well represented. It was great. We had it at the Leverett Library, which was nice of Leverett to volunteer. And I'm just so, I want to say thank you to the Community Network for Children and the Department of Early Education and Care for really supporting um, where education needs to start, right? We do really important work in early childhood and elementary school and it was nice to be um, recognized. Uh, we had our opening day convocation at Swift River School. Um, we usually have it at Irving, but we decided to change it up a little bit and, and rotate from school to school, which was great. We had a breakfast. I gave a brief welcome. Principal Mandanza led a super fun all-staff group activity, um, got everybody laughing and moving. And then our curriculum director talked about our district focuses this year, which is universal design for learning, equity, literacy, and expanding universal design into some co-teaching and inclusion models, which was great. We also had a district presentation from the collaborative on culturally responsive pedagogy. They, they're great and they were great remotely, but they're even better in person. So it was an awesome morning. And then lastly, um, we're becoming more of a district. Um, all of our schools are going to use um, Amplify M-Class platform to assess students with Dibbles Eight, so all four schools. And all schools are going to be using the Universal Screener for Number Sense and the forefront database to keep all of this data. So it's going to be really exciting when we have grade level meetings that we can start to look at the same information across the district. And that's my report. And I look forward to my next nine Chutesberry meetings because it's one of my favorite ones. So thank you. And thank you for all you've done over the years.
No, thank you. Um, so I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask, but having not gone through this process at all, um, the search for a new superintendent, how does that kick off? How does that work?
So I think the.
Oh, it's okay.
No, I do, I think the Union Twenty-Eight, the Joint Supervisory Committee, um, needs to think a little bit sooner than our November meeting about having a subcommittee, a search committee for that. Because superintendent's jobs are often posted in October, so I don't want our district to fall behind. So if anyone here at Chutesberry, um, and I can also reach out to our chair, um, from Irving or the chairs of all four, maybe I'll reach out to the, all of the chairs and say, we really need to be thinking about starting a search committee. And because she's so amazing, uh, Pam Rogers already has a lot of information about how to go through a search. She has a handbook from MASC for people. So what I can do is to send out um, an email to the chairs of all the committees, asking them to start thinking about a search committee.
That would be great. Um, Anna, go ahead. I see your hand.
So guess what? We're doing this in uh, Amherst Regional too.
So maybe you can help.
I am on the search subcommittee right now. So what I will say is there was a co- uh, a community member who came to the meeting and he was like, you should codify how you do this so that when it happens the next time, you, you aren't floundering around saying, what do, how do we do this now? And let's make a plan for how we're gonna do this and all the steps that need to happen. So as we're going through this process, um, I highly recommend that everybody writes down what you did and how you did it and whether it was successful and whether you would like to change it for the next time it happens so that the next committee who has to do a superintendent search has that to look back on. And maybe it'll be a little bit out of date, but I think a lot of the information will still be very helpful. And one thing that you can also think about is um, using a search firm to help, depending on how broadly you want to search. And then if you want to sort of stick with like Massachusetts um, superintendents, the MASC has a, a host of information and the superintendent, um, what is it, a bi- uh, committee? There's like a association of superintendents.
MAS S.
Yes.
Well, and I think almost all, a, a lot of Massachusetts districts hire MASC, I believe, a person from MASC to run all of the superintendent stuff. So that is another option too, if people want to pay for it, I think. I'm not sure.
Right. Point of interest, Jackie was on the superintendent search committee when I was hired. And I remember thinking, oh, who's that cute little young parent on the search? And it was Principal Mandanza.
Who is that baby? I showed a picture. Okay, hold on. This is one quick joke because I always try to make you all laugh a little bit, okay? So.
A lot of it.
And Jessica, well, this, this is just a, a little brief thing. Jessica was there. So going through my computer this summer, I found a picture of me that I took of myself on my first day of work at Chutesberry and I looked very young. And um, and I, I had like books behind me trying to look like so like fancy and I was like, had my cute little hair and I was like, you know, fifty pounds thinner and I was like, and I, I showed that picture and then I showed a picture that I use a lot of me and my moose hat. And um, I don't look as put together in that and I look very funny. And I said like, you know, ten years from this to this. And then I said, it's like the presidency. I age like four times more. But um, it's similar to what Jen said, you know. She's, Jen's been here a long time, so I looked, I looked very young on her search committee.
You still do, Jackie.
Suzie, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to say that regarding Anna's comment, I wouldn't be surprised if there are notes taken from past um, processes. Um, and so sometimes we always look forward, but sometimes we could look back and you might find the information you're thinking about, or at least it would reflect the community, although it would reflect the community at a different time.
All right, um, any other questions? Okay, um, moving forward, um, for our finance and operations report.
Hi, so, um, right now, this week, last week, next week, have all been spent on the end of year reports. The end of year reports are due September twenty-ninth. At the October school committee meeting, I'll be breaking down the report and asking for a vote to sign the signature page. And we will need the end of year port audit this year. We're on a six years, or sorry, three-year cycle, so it has to be audited every three years. And we're up for that audit this year, um, which will ask also for your approval for later this fall. I attended the Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials bi-monthly conference yesterday in Milford. The professional development topics were improving dialogue with your school committee, classroom observation, what does effective instruction look like in two thousand twenty-three, Open AI, Brave New World, and creating a student technology team. It's always a great opportunity to meet with other school business officials and network with others in the community. We had an MASC member at our table and she was great to just get her perspective. The budget and personnel subcommittee met Monday night before the joint supervisory committee meeting. They reorganized and had a first look at the FY twenty-five, Union Twenty-Eight draft budget. The district allocations will be calculated after the October first enrollments are in. But with the permission of the BMP Subcommittee, the draft budget was presented at the JSC meeting after. The proposed budget has an increase of three point nine percent, almost entirely contractual salary increases, but also containing a proposed increase in the number of steps for the four central office staff who are on the salary schedule. So the salary schedule for a central office is based on the average of the teacher COLA of the four districts. But what we've seen in the past couple of years, you know, four years ago was a zero percent increase. And then it was one point nine percent increase and then a one point six two five percent increase and this year one point seven five. The COLAs have remained pretty low because of, and through a lot of the, the bargaining that I've been involved with, there's a lot more and um, put into sick bank buyback or a sick leave buyback or sick time, um, and disability and longevity. And so there have been other places that teacher contracts have, have improved, but the COLAs have remained pretty low. So we're not looking to change how we are calculating the COLA for the central office staff, but we would like to add three additional steps. So of the four, four people, two of them would be able to increase to a step uh, eight. And because right now we have seven steps, but we would be adding an eight, nine and ten. So it gives our staff a little more room to grow in the position and we can try to encourage longevity of our staff and decrease some of the turnover. And that's all I have for my report.
Okay, thank you. Um, do you have any questions for Caitlin? Suzie, go ahead.
I just wanted to mention that the um, Chutesberry Finance Committee sent out its uh, letter requesting um, the FY twenty-five draft budgets. And um, I sent that note to um, Caitlin. Last year, there was a little bit of a snag because the school committee meetings didn't sort of jive with that schedule. Um, so I can just say that um, right now, the budget meeting with, for the um, SES budget is scheduled for, I just lost it. Um, I think it's it's January sixteenth. So in terms of the process, this time we are looking ahead at the schedule and seeing if we can make that mesh. Um, and if it needs to be different, then we just need to know and alter our schedule. Um, we're asking for level services. Um, we know that it's a contract year, I believe, for the teachers, not only the central. And um, give me, and I am the liaison. And so if there's any questions about deadlines, if there's any uh, new capital projects that are being proposed, that deadline, it's February first and we're paying a little bit more attention for the heads up on that. Um, and if people have questions about how it's organized, um, they should check in with me, but I also want to know, want you to know that I'm listening. And um, there was a little bit of go-around last year about the format of the budget, but the committee voted to support the format that came out, which has the main budget in a little box at the end, um, that talks about how other grants are being used. And as long as it has at least one historical year before, so we see where, what, how it was used last year and how it's going to be projected to use this year, I think the committee will be happy.
Suzie, I always, I really appreciated, you know, I've, um, we've been working together through now, I picked up the tail end of the FY twenty two budget and then through the FY twenty-three budget. And I have to tell you that I really appreciate that you ask a lot of questions. And by the time we have public hearings and by the time we have more formal discussions, we've already worked together through that to, to answer those questions. So thank you. Yeah, I do have your email and the, um, and the date printed out on my desk, so I'm aware. There in the date, I think it is good timing. Okay, we have, once the October first enrollments are in, then I can start doing allocations for the Union Twenty-Eight part of the budget. We have a leadership um, meeting next week where I'm, want to talk to all of the principals about what the calendar looks like. So that I can work with Jackie and with Jen before, you know, once we have the Union Twenty-Eight part set, start to put in those pieces and our timeline. I think we did not have a December meeting last year. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that's the one that, that didn't fit into the schedule. And I haven't seen the overall one for the SES school committee meetings, but I'm just letting you know how to frame it.
So. And Caitlin, we also had issues with the um, Union Twenty-Eight budget not being approved till January. So it was sort of like a perfect budget storm last year, which I think, you know, made it a little harder to get everything done, but I think we're in better shape this year.
Yeah. So we will, we'll have that calendar put together soon and we, we do um, want to have things, you know, more available earlier this time.
And I appreciate, this is a process and you have moved it along. You went from a transition into this and then, and I, I know we continue to make progress, so that's happy for me.
Thank you, Suzie.
Anna, go ahead. I see your hand.
Hey, so I think the um, the regional budget is also being renegotiated. This is like one of those every three years things or something like that where the entire. region and all of the sub parts have to get together and agree on how they're reallocating expenses and all this stuff. Am I correct in that? Is that coming up really soon? I think Suzie might.
The regional budget, um, in the past was admired in the assessment agreement. And that got cleared up, um, and hopefully it sticks. And, um, so we generally heard about things in December. And then again in February, um, regardless of the assessment agreement, but that, that's when people, that's when numbers began to be rolled out. So I don't know what things get redone and there's Shannon's dad because he would know.
Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, Anna, that, that's right. Every three years it does, it does get reshuffled and the entire budget gets looked at through a different lens than it does with just sending it to the four towns. And yeah, this is the year.
Just wanted to make sure that wasn't everybody's radar.
I would also like to mention that, um, to keep in mind that this is the last year of S R three money. So we, any funding we've used S R three money for, we will have to, to look at the budget in the frame of, we won't have that for, for the next year for FY25.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other questions? Yes, Jeremy, go.
Um, Caitlin, what is that money that you were talking about? Cause I'm catching up.
So, um, during, um, COVID, there was, um, S R one, then two, then three money released. Um, and so all of the Union 28 schools have used it for, um, for supplies and materials, for adjustment counselors, for, um, retirement benefits for, for other, for contracted services.
Interventionists.
So all of the, the S R three money will, we have to have all expenditures done by September 30th, 2024. So when looking at the 2025 budget, it won't be able to, we won't have it as a funding source.
Thank you.
It's a big loss.
Go ahead, Anna.
Yeah, it just, it, it's a federal funding source. So it's coming from the federal government and it was directly related to COVID.
Okay. Any other questions before we move on? Okay, Jackie, principals report.
Well, there's still a army talking about the out of district placement cost?
Oh, yes. Sorry. I apologize. Yes.
That's a really big thing.
I apologize. That was next on the list. Thank you. Caitlin, are you going to talk about that? It's under your thing.
Yeah, sorry, I can. So we do have, um, out of district tuition and transportation, which we have to, um, have to provide this year. So it is an unanticipated expense. So it's not worked into the, um, the budget into the local budget. So we have Jackie and I and Jen and I have been working to see what we can use out of S R three money that's left because we'll have to spend it by the end of the year pretty much anyway. Uh, and seeing what we will be able to provide this year, but we may have to ask for, and we can probably, we can apply for extraordinary relief to the state and get a little bit of circuit breaker, but with talking to, um, Jen Spofford, that might not be that much because you have to hit a certain amount, which is Jen, you might remember this no matter better than I do. It's
So for extraordinary relief or for a regular circuit breaker?
For extraordinary, for extraordinary relief for this year.
That one I do, I do have all the figures for circuit breaker. I don't have extraordinary relief. So the, they're a year behind. So in looking at the reimbursement rate, there's, um, 75% for instruction and tuition and then 75% of 75% of eligible costs for transportation. And currently the claim threshold is 47,363. They won't calculate the new claim threshold um, until July. So, um, we won't have any exact figures and I don't know what the extraordinary relief is, but we will be able to claim hopefully some circuit breaker funding to get reimbursed.
And as we all know, it's a little over a hundred thousand dollars, um, as of right now, which I'm just going to be really blunt and I don't, I'm just going to put it out there. That's actually very reasonable for an out of district placement and, um, and, uh, this is a, a cost that we can expect to have for several years to come. And so, um, although we can try to see what we have in S R, it is not going to cover all of it. We're going to have to go to the town. Um, and moving forward in our budget, the committee has to think about whether they want to put that in, like, we're going to have to put that into the budget. So when Suzie is saying like they want to like level funded budget, well, there's a hundred thousand dollars that is going to have to be.
It's level services, not level funded.
Okay. Level services.
So we can plan moving forward for the tuition and the transportation, but this year we're going to have to figure out what we can come up with out of our budget and what we might have to ask the town for.
So just running by a number, was the 47, 763, what, what portion, is that a portion of the hundred thousand? Or a different thing?
That's, that's reimbursement, which is like a year later. And I think it looks like FY23 might be 49,000 is the claimed threshold. So let's round it up to 50, right? This tuition is a hundred thousand, Jackie?
No, the tuition's only 58,000.
All right. So
The total ball, the total all in is over a hundred and that includes the transportation, which is.
So if the tuition's 50,000, we probably wouldn't be able to claim much because we'll just be at threshold. But for transportation, it looks like we can get 75% of 75% of eligible costs. So we will be getting some money back, but it's a year later.
And so without those calculations now, um, what the, what the state's calculations will be, what we will land at exactly. We know that we can probably expect a little bit back for this year, based on kind of what we've seen at, at previous districts. Um, but it won't be much for this year and then we can get a better idea of what we're budgeting for next year.
So we just wanted Suzie you to hear that we might be having to come to you and say, here's this year's out of district placement. We may need a little help.
Yeah. And so when numbers can start to be, um, framed, that'd be great. And I wondered if, um, there was trying to remember all the pieces and I have a lot less pieces to remember than you. Um, they changed the state uh, rate for special ed. Maybe this is in the regional budget though, not at this.
No, I can speak to that. So the operational services division raised the amount that tuition can be for private institutions of 13%, I think.
Yeah.
I don't, I have to look into whether this placement, um, also saw that increase. I don't, yeah, I don't think so.
It is not a, it, it is not a, a private placement.
So that, that wouldn't be affected.
But it doesn't apply.
Okay.
So we're going to do our best Suzie to look at what we have in our budget this year to help out the town and, but I don't think we can come up with the entire.
Yep. And it's good to be looking ahead as this is a reoccurring and to, to build it in some way somehow.
Anna, do you have a question?
It's really like, um, it's just one kid and it's, um, do we know what grade they are in this year? We don't share that publicly. It's too identifying. But we know. So in other words, for budgeting purposes, we can say, we need to budget this for X number of years, or we need to budget this, this year. And then next year, we know, we need to budget it next year. Okay. Yeah. So that's, at least we have that information. We can maybe work that into the school budget more generally.
And we've been fortunate to not have to do this very often. And so when we have to do it, we have to do it. It's like, okay.
Yeah. And I think that's one of the great things about our Union 28 schools. It's, it really is a last resort. Our staff is amazing at keeping kids in their schools.
Okay. Any more questions on the out of district placement? No? Okay. Um, Jackie, principals report.
Yeah, I'll be quick because you heard from me a lot. Um, we've had a great start to the school year. It's been very smooth routines. It doesn't feel like we had a summer vacation. It honestly feels like we just had like a two week little break and we just like picked right back up. And I do think it's because of, um, our, our really kind of concrete schoolwide expectations and our level one um, SEL instruction with Jess, with Jessica and Amity are really a, a part of that and how we act and behave and treat each other in school. Um, and, uh, we have a new teacher, but she's not new to Chutes Berry, but she's new to us again. That's Vanessa Bergman in fifth grade. She, I hired Vanessa Bergman, uh, seven years ago, eight years ago, maybe, um, as the fifth grade teacher. And then she left to have some children and she raised them a bit, doing a little part-time, um, math intervention work. And now she's back in our fifth grade. She's fabulous. Um, and we're rolling out, um, you know this from last year, we're rolling out a new math curriculum called Bridges and we're rolling out a new ELA curriculum called EL Learning, um, or EL Education. Both are going really strongly. We're continuing our social emotional learning work with choose love and lots of other good best practices. Um, tomorrow nature's classroom is coming for grades five and six for a full day outside in Chutes Berry and our woods and our fields for a science-based, um, not a field, a, a home field trip here at school. And we, um, uh, al- although we're not, it's going to be publicly released soon. We did get our MCAS result, results back and Chutes Berry um, continues to do very well, um, in terms of, in comparison to the state and in terms of reaching our goals that are set by the state. The one place where we did not do as well is honestly in our attendance category. And it's something that I'm, um, going to be writing a letter to the community next week. And I feel like with COVID particularly, attendance has become, um, tricky because we were for a long time asking people to stay home if they had any sort of anything. Um, and so it was kind of hard to hold people accountable for their absences when we're asking you to keep your kid home for certain things. But chronic absenteeism in Massachusetts is anything over 10% of the school year. So if the school year is 180 days, it means anything over 18 days. And we had too many students fall into being chronically absent category. I think that's for several reasons. Do you think our community at large in general is more, um, health conscious and, 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 um, wanting to keep people safe. Um, and I do think that that's part of it. But I think part of it too is that, you know, we as a school have been more lax in these past few years around, you know, having our attendance meetings and having attendance contracts and really talking about why daily attendance is a real vital part to a kid being successful in school. And, um, and so I'm going to have to start picking that up a little bit. Um, and you know, I even think for our community, just explaining what chronic absenteeism is and what what it means and what the state identifies as that. And then also ways we can help you if you're struggling getting your kid to school or um, if there's any school avoidance, which usually we know about anyway, um, and we have a plan about. But like also things like, please don't plan your vacations during the school year, you know, really try to use those school vacations, you know, built in to the year on purpose. Like, don't pull your kid for two weeks, you know, to go to Disney and whatever, like little things like that, you know, like just trying to remind people the importance of every single, especially when your kid's learning how to read. And when your kids learning how to do basic math, um, it's really important that they're here every day. So so you'll be seeing that. And then the last thing is, is that our open house is on October 4th. Since you will, well, Jen is no longer, sorry Jen, but the rest of you are current parents of uh, of students in the school. I will look forward to hopefully seeing you. It's from six to 6:45. It's a whole family event. It's pretty chill. You get to come in, you get to meet the teacher, see the classroom, go around, see all the other classrooms. And then usually what happens, sometimes little teachers have little like scavenger hunts and then it usually ends up in like a full school play session outside on the playground and in the fairy woods. So, um, we always really enjoy those, those, those nights. So that's my, that's my report.
Thank you. Um, any questions for Jackie? Okay, um, Amorous Pelham report. Anna, I believe you're up.
So it's been a busy season. Um, let's see, where are my notes? Here they are. Um, so right after, uh, pretty quickly after I joined, um, we were able to finalize the A P E A contract. So that was good. Um, that had been highly contested and drawn out for quite a while. So it was nice to be able to get that off our plates. Um, it did however, increase a lot of costs. And so I'm not sure how that is going to affect um, the amount of money that we will be contributing to the regional school system, but it will definitely be an increase just to put that on the radar. And I think, you know, right now they're living with the budget that they're in. Um, but the contract negotiations are retroactive for like two years or something because it took them so long to finalize everything. Um, so now that basically means that with this, the given budget, we just have to look within the school system to try to save money on other things to be able to pay the teachers and staff, um, what we promised them. So that's going to be fun. Um, we did sign a mutually agreed upon separation agreement with Mike Morris and he will, he has left his final, last day was July 31st, I think. August 31st, 30th? Yeah, that's right. And so, um, the school committee, uh, again, appointed Doug Slaughter as the interim superintendent. So he will be taking over and, well, he has already taken over and will be serving through the end of the school year. Um, we are still, we are starting our superintendent search as well. So we're on the same timeframe because we both need, um, a new superintendent for the, for the next school year. Um, so it's good to know that jobs that get, get posted in Octobers, I will have my first subcommittee meeting and I can make sure that they all know that as well. Uh, we are, um, a whole bunch of Amherst school committee members, um, resigned. And so we need to fill three Amherst spots. Um, we need, they will also need to fill a Pelham spot, but they filled the, the Pelham spot on the, um, regional committee. So that's not, um, as big of an issue. Um, but the Amherst spots are just completely vacant right now. And so we need to get those filled. And then filling up some of the subcommittees and things is, uh, we're trying to wait until we have everybody back in chairs. And then, um, so Jennifer Shaw, Margaret Stanser, William Share and I are on the subcommittee uh, for organizing the search committee. So we should be able to sort of like keep you abreast on how that's going. And I'm, I think you are aware that three separate MCAD complaints have been filed against the superintendent. the superintendent and the school committee or the regional committee, the district, which is the committee. And so we will be addressing those as well. I think that's everything. Any questions?
Julie, go ahead. Sorry, Anna, can you talk a little bit more about that last part that you said about the?
MCAD complaints?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm not sure if I can name names. But one, one complaint was filed claiming racial discrimination. Actually, actually, I think two. So one of them had some components of both gender and racial discrimination and the other two were strictly racial discrimination complaints. One of them had to do with difference in treatment between the employee and other employees of somewhat different levels within the system. And one of them had to do with similar employees in the same position, but being treated differently. And I think two of them were more along those lines. And so it's clear that the regional school district and probably Amherst in general has some work to do in looking at hiring practices and racial bias within the everyday work environment. And hopefully we can get that sorted, but you know, there's a lot that we're working, working on in the region. So hopefully we can treat people better.
Suzie, do you have a question?
Yeah, um, I hate to even bring it up, but is the track, is the track project going to be reviewed because of the change in committee members? Or is there any kind of timeline unfolding for that?
I have to say it is not a hot topic right now. I have put it on, I have put it as a request to have it discussed. Tom Fanning put it on the, put it as a request to have it talked about, but then Pelham removed him from the regional school committee. So now he's fighting the Pelham School Committee and System to get back on the regional committee. But for now, William Sher has replaced him. And I think he was sort of like really, that was like a focus for him. I'm trying to get it back on the radar. The problem right now is that it's an extremely expensive project and the turf project costs really depend on which kind of artificial turf you choose. And so making sure that we have the correct cost estimate for both the turf options and all of the different types of turf options as well as grass options is going to be very important moving forward. Given the, the expenses that are currently on the table, I'm not entirely sure how this is moving forward right now. I think everyone agrees that it does need to be fixed. I think how we get there is still not decided and it's being slowed down because of this huge turnover, I think. So we'll see if we can get it on one of the next few committee meeting agendas. I know that wasn't super helpful.
Why I'm not pushing, I'm just trying to deal with some questions that come up and I just wanted to.
Yeah.
You've given me enough for that. Thank you.
Okay, great.
Okay, it looks like we have one more hand, Steve.
Yeah. So first I just want to say, Anna, you're doing a great job. And the other thing is, since we're talking the track, the track itself was supposed to be resurfaced in 2002. So it's been a couple of years and I'm going to start coming down to the meetings again and start talking about the girls locker room and the track and the field.
Great.
Oh, and I will, I will email you my experience with using a national search committee for looking for a regional school superintendent. It's terrible.
Oh, no. Which one?
That was while we were looking to replace Maria Garrick before.
No, the, the committee, the, the firm.
Oh, I can't, I, I'd have to look it up.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Do send me that information. That'll be super helpful.
Any other questions for Anna? It doesn't look like it. So Union 28 report. Julie, did you want to take that?
Sure. So I believe Jeremy and Bethany were both there. So if you hear me making mint meat, please help. But I'm just gonna go down. So obviously, the first announcement was our beloved Jennifer will be retiring. So obviously, there was discussion about a subcommittee to try to find a new superintendent. And also the group needs to reorganize for a new chair and vice chair. And there was discussion around that, but it was tabled because no one was coming forward to do either of those positions. I will move on to the main part of the meeting was that Heather Mashad gave a great report out from the Commonwealth Community Compact Best Practice Operational Efficiency Study of Union 28, which just rolls off the tongue. There were many slides and the report itself is over 100 pages. So I will give you some takeaways, but I will also say that they promised that they would share with all the school committees and it would be posted on the central website. So and, okay, so key takeaways. Union personnel are extraordinarily loyal to their schools and work extremely hard to create the best possible environment for students. The single greatest factor impacting operations is the union's decentralized governmental structure. The union has insufficient staffing levels necessary to support operations. The union lacks a cohesive bond and shared vision between all schools. Our schools are not spending a material amount more than average Massachusetts schools. And procurement practices lack strategy resulting in less advantageous pricing. And I actually want to break that down a little bit into this is from one of the slides, like the summarized slide, but I do want to give you like a better sense of what that all meant. Basically, and please Beth and Jeremy help out, but there are staffing positions in our separate schools where there's no redundancy. We're really reliant on that one person to do that job. So that was in like food services, custodial. And if that person, like often that person in that position. Exactly. Often that person in that position feels like if they're not there to do that thing, there's not there's no one there to take over, at least to the capability that they have. And so that's an issue. Both of burnout and just an unfair expectation that those folks don't have a lot of time or support to like, try to problem solve with each other within the union. And that they don't have a lot of like professional development opportunities either. So.
Because they're sick was the other thing that we kept coming up was that they just keep working in sickness because they don't feel like they can miss a day.
That are it's funny because I think that a lot of the bidding and procurement and maybe Caitlin, you can actually talk about this a little bit. It sounded like they were basically saying that there were times where the ways that we apply different like group pricing isn't being applied, but also even if it were, it wouldn't materially change. It's not big amounts that it would change our budgets by. So it's not like a huge savings that we're missing, but there are ways that we can streamline things. And also there was a lot of discussion about someone in a central position and usually sort of a higher position working to liaise with all of the schools to support at a more like central administrative level. So there was a lot of talk about like a director of nutrition, like HR payroll. There was basically like, I want to say three or four different positions that were at the director level that would be able to support all four of the schools. Sorry.
Food service and tech too, I think, were the two other directors. No, you said nutrition. So tech, tech was the other one.
I will say there are probably, there were probably some questions that the representation from the report were. Okay, so let me just give it an example, see if that makes sense. So when it comes to like food service procurement, if you ask, I mean, our food service, our cafeterias are run on next to nobody. It is a food service director and a part time, maybe.
We have a food service director and a part time person. That's it.
That's it. So if you were to ask them, what's your procurement process? They might not know, not know the answer to that question. If you say, how do you, how do you, how are you purchasing your food? And they may say, well, I've got this list of stuff from, you know, the collaborative for food for schools or for whatever. And I pick off of the list and that's what I get. That is our procurement process. So though the report said we don't have one, we do, we, we go through a procurement process for all food service at all four schools. It just didn't appear that way in, in the report. And I wonder if it was just the way that the question was asked. But and since the, since the time that I was interviewed for the court interview during it, I've also received my MCTPO certification. So we are making gains with procurement at this point.
So I did wonder if it was possible that in a future meeting, we could put this on the agenda and just talk about what like, now that we have this data, and they did break it down per school, I think, within that. But now that we have this data, it might be interesting to just talk about if there are any action items that are coming out of it that affect Schutze Berry or where Schutze Berry is placed within like where we feel we do have strengths in there or where we do see that some of the information in this report would be of benefit. I'm not saying we should do that now. I think that we should put it on a future agenda item. So I did have a couple of other things. So the leadership team. Actually, you already talked about this, Jen, that the leadership team is working with the collaborative to develop social justice standards. So this is outside of that report and moving on to other items that were on the agenda. We got a report out from the Director of Finance and Operations, Caitlin, about the budget update. And then there, we had a report out from the Director of Curriculum and Instruction. And I think also, Jen, you covered that in your report out tonight. And there was also a report from the Director of Student Support Services, which included the roadmap for continuous services and basically outlined lots of great student support services that are going to be implemented this year as they were last year. And then two of the schools reported out updates.
And I just, I think it behooves us to mention that the Irving School Committee is proposing to look at withdrawing or the pros and cons of withdrawing from Union 28. And so I think that will be a continued topic at the joint supervisory level. And I know it was discussed a little bit at the Leverett School Committee. So I just wanted for people who weren't at the joint meeting to hear that that is being proposed by one of our member towns.
Suzie, go ahead.
I guess I had heard that rumor a while ago and it would probably be helpful if the superintendent's office begins to, if it figures out what the threshold of that rumor or that concept is, and then flushes out what that would look like for the remaining towns. Because it's not an experience we have. And so it, it might be too early to talk about it. It might be just an idea that's just beginning. But at some point, I would guess that it's the superintendent's office that could sort of help us see what that looks like.
So yes and no. Right now there at the beginning stages, we're also all represented by the same legal counsel. So we can't get advice from counsel until Irving decides to move further forward and then they would choose their own legal counsel and then our counsel could advise us further. But as soon as we know anything, we'll keep committees and towns abreast of that information.
Anything else about the Union 28 meeting? I think we covered it all. Okay, and the CES report, do we have one?
Not really. We're going to be meeting on next, next week and then I'll have a report at our next meeting.
Okay, great. Okay, we don't have any policies to review at this time, but I can assure you next meeting. And going forward, you'll probably have a sloop. So we can look forward to that. And future business, our next policy committee is October 19th. Our next school committee meeting is October 19th. And the next Union 28 meeting is November 20th. But hopefully, as Jen said, we'll something will transpire before that. Anything else? Any questions? Anything we need? Suzie, go ahead.
I want to thank everybody for jumping in and swimming hard. And I appreciate the newbies doing this and I appreciate the town support that we have for you that not always obvious, but it's, it's there.
And I have, I'm thankful too. But I am speaking on behalf of some of the leadership team, particularly some of the principals of Union 28. And I would just love to encourage this committee to be very vocal with the Joint Supervisory Committee around getting a committee and posting up for superintendent sooner rather than later because it, like you heard, most of the superintendent postings go up in the fall. And if we are even posting in February, we're missing the boat on talent. And so not many people want to be a superintendent. If you can imagine why. So, and you know, and being a superintendent of a union with four, with five, with five towns and four districts and one wanting to leave. It's not super enticing. So I would really encourage you to please be vocal about getting that going like before November 20th. Please, thank you.
Very much agree. Anything else? Julie?
Maybe Beth, Jeremy and I can get together and sort of strategize about what we could do to help move that forward.
Yeah, we can do that.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. Definitely.
We'll figure that out.
And I speak on behalf of Central Office as well, actually. So Caitlin reminded. But yes, I speak on behalf of anyone who works closely with the superintendent.
It's probably not helpful that nobody wants to lead that committee right now either, but we'll figure, we'll figure that out.
I mean, if we don't have a new superintendent, Jen, you just like takes these backsies, you'll just have to stay. So that'll be fine.
I think that's in my contract, takes these backsies. It's the last bullet.
Takesy backsies, I think, right? Takesy backsies, I think, right?
Exactly.
But truly, it's a very unique, but it's, it's there. It's a very, I don't have to say it to you, but it's a very unique and a very complicated structure. It's like one of the only ones in Massachusetts still like this, so.
Yeah, takes a special person.
That's because I work with awesome Central Office people and amazing principals. Who used to look young but don't anymore.
Okay, so I guess we're good and I believe I have to, to have to ask for a motion to. End the meeting.
Adjourn, yeah, I think. I, I moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, thank you very much and we will talk soon.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye.